Good evening, everyone. It is 5:31. And the late, not so great Kevin Cottle arrives. This is the special call meeting for today, Thursday, May the 18th, to discuss the preliminary budget and any potential action by this commission. Mr. Atkins is unavailable and will not be with us. Before we begin, is everyone comfortable with the agenda?
Sure.
Is there any comments that need to come before we get into the agenda? That, Ms. Scott, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I want our discussion to be productive tonight. We've had a earlier presentation of the preliminary budget on April 27th, and I don't really intend to go through that again, line item by line item, but rather to perhaps summarize some of that earlier thought and presentation in an effective way so that we can have a good understanding of our recommended budget for the next year. I thought of beginning the discussion by just talking about our agreed-upon schedule that we talked about earlier this year. Of course, we're here today in a special session to again review the preliminary budget. And if the commission as a body has suggested changes to anything presented, they could voice that recommendation or desire today, and that would give staff the time to consider that for incorporation into a final proposed budget that will be presented in the quick turnaround time of next Monday. So, we won't be able to, if there are any requested changes, to consider and make those as we're going to get your packet out tomorrow morning, by noon or thereabout. So, our proposed budget, if there are changes that differ from the preliminary budget, that will be handed out on Monday. So, I just want to make that kind of clear as we are beginning our discussion. The preliminary budget to be reviewed tonight is, for the most part, similar or identical to what was presented earlier, with the primary change being more accurate figures in the preliminary budget to reflect more accurate cost estimates for our fire department, construction cost as a result of our recent presentation from Breviero regarding the need to construct a new facility. So, that is one of the major differences here. The changes are projected total amount of new revenue needs, which increased that really from the earlier amount of roughly a million and a half to now roughly a million nine. I've attempted for the commission's understanding and also for the community's understanding, as this memo will be posted on our webpage tomorrow morning, or maybe even tonight if we get people that are able to do that this late in the day. I have identified for the next five fiscal years really what staff believe and I believe are major new needs that the city commission needs to be mindful of. These are by no means a comprehensive list of our future needs, but it's reflective of our discussion back on February 3rd of this year in terms of recognizing some of the increased challenges the city faces in terms of doing anything new or improving services with our rather limited revenue that we have now and rather limited prospect for increasing that revenue without doing some rate adjustment. So, I want to deny to, if you turn to page two of your memo that I distributed tonight. It has all the items that were presented at the earlier time in terms of sidewalk repairs, the second street bridge replacement, road paving, blighted property, the emergency medical dispatch services. There's the footnote on the 911 share reduction, which may have been corrected. It's a little unclear from seeing the county's budget whether they have yet corrected an earlier draft or made amendment to an earlier draft to fully restore the amount of 911 funding the county intends to provide to the city. But I would say based upon newspaper accounts and also personal accounts made to me by the judge, they intend to pay their, quote, fair share of 911 services going forward as that's determined to be as a result of our efforts to continue discussions and enter into an interlocal agreement specifying that. They have said that we're going to pay our fair share as that's determined. They've stepped up and said, "We're going to pay $105,000 additional in medical dispatch services." So, I commend them for both of those actions. But just technically, as the budget was presented, it wasn't really clear at that time and maybe not yet. I haven't seen a revised version. So, our budget didn't change from that which we developed based upon our earlier knowledge and understanding at that time. So, that's still in there. The Architectural Heritage Board Preservation Effort, that's in there. The EDP amount has been reduced from an earlier proposal of, I think, $95,000 to a, an amount suggested as a grant program, $40,000, to be matched dollar for dollar for implementation of the RKG recommendations based upon public or private sector support to do so.
Is there any stipulations on where that match is to come from?
No, I thought, you know, that's trying to, in my opinion, to overly orchestrate participation. The study has yet to be finally presented. It's going to be done, I think, June the 6th in an evening meeting here in town. And we've seen the earlier versions of that, but not the whole comprehensive list of the to-do list. And my personal hope is, that is, that's unveiled and we discussed, that the community will understand the significance of that and public or private sources will say, "That's worth doing and worth putting some more money into." So, I wanted to continue to support that, but it's also in recognition that it's a partnership and it's not just the city funding the whole deal. So, it's a step forward. That's not the beginning or the end of what might in future be allocated to the EDP. But it's a reasonable amount saying, "Look, folks, we think this has merit. If you agree, put some money up and we'll match it." And I don't deal with the equities or inequities of who does what in that proposal. We may all have our opinions of whether it's, you know, a third, a third, a third, or 50/50, or whatever it's split is, but it's going to require more money, as has been said repeatedly. It's going to take more money to get better outcomes and different outcomes. And we either fund an additional amount of money collectively among us or we scale back expectations. I still personally don't want to scale back expectations of better results and greater results being obtained. And so, this is a carrot incentive to try to move down that road. So, the ad hoc additional funding, same as before. We're talking about additional paving while the cost of paving is relatively lower. $25,000 for the parking lot at Millennium Park. BCTC grant to promote their acceptance and utilization of the state grant for about three-quarters of a million dollars. Our $50,000 to that effort. And then our streetscape amount, which is the largest, a large amount here, $484,250 is for the two-phased approach for Main Street improvements, streetscape improvements from Fifth to Second. We are already started on the Fifth to Fourth, and the other part of that will be contingent upon receiving a state grant to pay about 80% of that total cost.
And that money is a matching, it's a matching grant, for lack of a better term, correct?
Yes, it is.
So, we put in that amount of money, the state puts in that amount of money.
Well, they put in 80%, we put in 20%.
Oh, that's all even better. I think it's important for that distinction to be made.
Yeah, I mean, the state's going to give us, if we get that grant, which is still officially pending, it's almost a million dollars for that Fourth to Second Street portion. So, it's a definite boost to all the businesses downtown and Danville as a whole if we get and match that. And so, I'm still very hopeful that that will occur. We were supposed to have heard the outcome of that decision before the end of 2016, and we haven't heard the outcome yet. These things take a while. And so, we're encouraged by the green light to proceed on Main Street from Fifth to Fourth. And we, we have a history of making improvements. Third Street is one of those that we completed last year. And this chart recognizes the fact, the probability that we're going to have other streetscape improvements that the city is going to need or want to undertake in future years. So, while in this next year, we're talking about the amount of $484,250 being the city's match, probably in every year, we're going to have a project of a couple hundred thousand dollars or more that we're going to hope to use. And so, that's part of that five-year look ahead.
That's also where the state funds the school money comes from also for the sidewalk projects that we've been doing. It comes out of that fund also.
Do you foresee any of those future projects accessing state funds in the 80/20 ratio?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is our, this is our match again. It's not a total 100%.
In other words, we put up $200,000, we're going to get basically a million dollars' worth of sidewalks.
Right.
I got you.
Right. And we have other needs downtown. I mean, part of the great improvement that could be made when we get to that phase next would be Fourth Street, say, from Walnut to Broadway. You know, that would just transform that other half of downtown going through our city. So, there are those plans for the future. There are some other few capital, public works equipment in some of those years specified. Those tie in with the capital budgets that you've got detail further in the book. And then, of course, we have underway now the master park planning effort for Millennium Park and the entire city park system. And probably, it's reasonable to expect as an outcome of that study, we will have recommendations made to us in some form or another that's going to involve some capital projects that are going to be necessary to build or desirable to build as the commission might determine in future year. We're two years out from the probable date, in our opinion, but we're trying to indicate the need to have money to make, to implement whatever of those recommendations you might choose to implement. This is by no means a comprehensive list, as I said before. I mean, we've got the Wayfinding Sinage Program study underway now. That's going to require some money out of the city. These are just significant new identified needs that we can readily see. So, those are listed for your consideration. You see, though, in each of the next five years, you're talking around terms about $2 million or more being required to implement and sustain those efforts. And that's the takeaway here in terms of the need. A half million dollars of that is simply for the construction and debt service, for the debt service on our fire station and our hook and ladder truck that will begin next fiscal year. So, you know, a rational person might ask, and on page three, I've tried to give a rational answer to that, "Don't we get some growth anyway out of our taxes we impose?" Yes, to a very limited extent. Our, we've lost industry. Our biggest source of revenue is the occupational license tax or license fee, as it's called, and the net profits tax. We've had some industry closings. We don't believe revenue will be significantly enhanced in the year ahead. Even if we should have some marginal growth, it's going to be marginal probably and not of the magnitude necessary to implement and sustain these ventures.
Ron, if you, go ahead, Kevin.
Well, mine's more of a general question.
Mine's general too. Just for the sake of the public, I think it's worth, again, mentioning the limited sources of revenue that the city has.
Well, not only this city, but all cities
All cities, right.
are severely limited by the constitution and state law in terms of the choices they have to generate revenue. The occupational license fee and net profits tax is by and large the largest and most commonly used revenue source of cities. And many cities are already at and have been at the level I'm recommending for many years. Danville is not a city of first when it comes to living taxes. We, that's a good thing. You know, we don't want to be proactive on that if we don't need to. But if we, if we need to, we need to. Or we need to just, again, readjust our expectations going forward. And so, that's the primary source. We have property taxes, which are a minor source. They're limited under House Bill 44, which was passed back in 1979 to limit the ability of city counties and all local special district local governments to generate anymore. They're locked in basically to what they generated the year before, except for new growth in property that may have occurred. With exception, they can have a 4% sort of cost of living adjustment if they choose to take it. Or they can also put out to a vote the possibility of levying an additional tax to generate more than the 4% growth that would have to be approved by the voters for that to occur. As I recall from our discussions in earlier years with this commission, looking at the tax rates that Danville charges on property tax, ad valorem taxes, as I recall, of 132 cities, with the most expensive rate being number one and the least expensive being 132, I think Danville ranked 116. So, we are on the lower side of the scale when it comes to tax rates. And clearly, in our community here, we know that our 14 cents per hundred in valuation is palest by the comparison of other cities or our school tax rates that are levied. Now, granted, the school taxes, they don't have other sources of revenue that they have, and so, they have to go to a higher rate. But our tax rate is very moderate in comparison to other cities. So, that's the second. There are, the other big generator for cities is the municipal insurance premium tax. And we're one of a handful of states that allow cities and counties now. Counties didn't do this for a long time, but in the last 10 years, they were authorized also levy insurance premium tax collections, which is an add-on insurance tax that is added to the cost of insurance located within the city limits. And in this case, it's different counties, of course. And the agents basically apply that rate to the premium cost and the insurance company bills and collects it and remits it now quarterly to the cities. And that's, that's a pretty significant source of revenue. Several years ago, the city adjusted their municipal insurance premium tax rate to be exactly the median charged by other cities. We're at an 8% rate, and that's the average charge by cities throughout the Commonwealth, with many of those being higher than 8%, some lower, of course, or it wouldn't be median. But that is another source that we have used. And what is the other significant revenue source that I'm missing? I can look at our revenue projections. Alcohol is the other big one that we do have. That's a, that's not really, that's a regulatory fee rather than a general tax. And that's a Johnny-come-lately sort of authority that cities have only had in a very short period of time. But those that are wet generally use those. Two sessions ago, I believe it was, Bridgette, the General Assembly tightened up the manner in which cities can adjust that tax. And now, we're restricted as a city to demonstrate the need for increasing those tax rates going forward. And you can't really generate any greater revenues than you can demonstrate you've used in the prior year for law regulatory, alcohol regulatory purposes. And so, that has, has become a much more restricted source of revenue for cities and Danville. And actually, our revenue from that source has become flat for the last couple of years, given the great increase of jurisdictions that have gone wet in the last several years. And we no longer are the only stopping off point to Lake Cumberland, for example.
However, if we didn't have that, that's about $600,000 in revenue.
It is.
And I'd hate to think where we would be if we didn't have that.
Well, we've done a lot of good things. Not to digress into the weeds too much on that, but I mean, in terms of alcohol prevention with our schools, in terms of drinking and driving, our training of that, our regulation of the industry in terms of bars and nightclubs, making sure that they abide by the laws, those type of things, which make it safer for the public in general. That's really about it in terms of major sources. Now, there are a lot of sort of little minor things that are, the city does receive. our 911 service that we provide to all residents in Boil County, incorporated cities of Perryville and Junction City, as well as Danville and Boil County. You know, we really, under law, are the provider of that service. And we do receive, as I mentioned earlier, fees from other jurisdictions for providing that service. Boil County could be considered the primary one of that that basically contracts with the city of Danville to provide that service or supports the provision of the service, depending on how you look at it. Similar, just in a similar vein, is how we contract with the county to collect our taxes. They do it in the manner that they deem appropriate, and they remit under the terms and conditions of the services. This is kind of the flip side of that arrangement. And there are other things that we do jointly with the county, such as solid waste collection. They manage, they coordinate, I would call it solid waste collection. We have a contract for our contractor. But there are things that we do in common where on one side, the city is the primary lead. On the other, the county. And in some of these, we've received funds back and forth or we pay back and forth. What we don't have, and we've talked about this a lot locally and statewide, is the restaurant tax. We're essentially surrounded by communities, fourth-class cities that several years ago, and I don't know now if it's four, six, or it's been quite a while years ago, that the General Assembly authorized cities to levy a restaurant tax as a percentage up to 3% of sales at their restaurants. A 2012 study by the Kentucky League of Cities said that if we had that authority in the city of Danville based upon the restaurant volumes that occurred at that time, it would generate probably a million and a half to $2 million a year. It might have been a little less, but adjusted for inflation, it probably would be in the range of a $2 million source of revenue to the city. Again, we're essentially surrounded by cities that have that tax authority now. I've heard that that's an unpopular idea in Danville. And it may be. But it's, it's, it's in operation and a bunch of other cities in Kentucky, including Elizabeth Town, that funds their world-class sports facility there. And it's a way of not taxing the producer, but rather the consumer of goods, which includes tourism. We're a Mecca for tourist activities. We have over $82 million in Boil County tourism receipts. And it would be a way, if we ever get authority to do that, to not just tax ourselves, but to also allow those who enjoy coming and spending their dollars here to spend another percent or two to help maintain those wonderful facilities that come to see. But I think that may complete my answer to your question.
I was trying to think, was it two or three years ago when we raised the taxes for?
It was for property?
Well, it was, we did practically everything. Two years ago.
Two years ago. We had, I believe, a, we raised property taxes. We did make a one-quarter of 1% adjustment in the net profits fee and the occupational license tax fee. We, at one time, and maybe it was earlier in that one year because it had been so long since any city manager or city commission had looked at this in a comprehensive way, we made adjustments to the municipal insurance premium tax, which again...
2014.
That was in 2014. And again, went to the median of what other cities had been charging well in advance of us. And it takes a while for these actions to actually resolve in the projected or hoped-for revenue. We also renewed in the last year or two our long-expired franchise fees with our cable television system. We also, with the cooperation of Atmos Energy, were able to implement a small, and on parity, I would say, franchise fee on gas equal to that that they were paying on utility fees, thus not treating those folks who use gas and electricity differently. So, we have gone in a rather comprehensive way of closely examining what our revenue sources were, what they could be, the amounts of money that we are getting or could get. And I think personally, took some actions that required some gumption to do for the benefit of our community.
Well, and I agree, they hadn't been, I guess, none of that had been looked at for probably 10 years prior to that or longer. I guess that's my, that's where I'm trying to, this budget's giving me a hard time just to be honest with you, is because, you know, we raised them 10 or 12 years ago, and that sort of chalked us through some tough times and got us till a couple of years ago. Then we raised them again, and now it's, it's only been two years. And now, we're asking for more. At what point do we start budgeting like we're not going to have anymore?
Sometimes you have to spend more to save more. Now, that sounds like an oxymoron.
No, I...
But, you know, we've gone through a two-year exercise of looking at our energy consumption as a city. And we've recognized we're spending over a million dollars to keep the lights on, in essence. And so, we have gone to energy contracting under the authority of the law to, that allows the government to partner with a private source to have guaranteed savings in our energy consumption. In essence, while we have to front-end that money, it's front-ending the money, we're guaranteed to achieve a lower cost over the lifetime of that usage. Thus, in essence, getting to, I won't say necessarily free replacement of obsolete equipment, but kind of like that, where we are saving the cost of making it outside of that arrangement. And other cities, big and small, have done this, Louisville on down. So, that's a way of spending money to save money. And that's contemplated for action implementation this next year through bond issue, as you know.
I think also to answer your question, I think that's part of what Ron's five-year on page two is showing, is that if we get this, that this will sustain us for hopefully the next little bit.
Five years or longer, right.
Well, you know, I think we had kind of hoped that this would last longer than two years. So, I hope it does last five years. I just, and I'm not criticizing the budget or anything. These are questions that I've had and that I've been asked. So, I feel obligated to ask them.
Well, there's two, there's two large components in this budget that I don't think anybody saw 12 months ago, maybe even six months ago. One of them is the fire station.
Well, I might differ respectfully with that. We had a 2004 facility study that said you need a new city hall. You need a new public works building. You need a new, a separate fire station. You need to replace the Main Street station. That's 2004 or '05. Earl could correct me on that. But it was about that era where we contracted and they looked at all the facility and they said, "It's coming." And so, you know, 10, 15 years later, it's here.
So, hindsight being 2020, at that time, it would have been a good time to say, "We need to start putting together a capital reserve fund for these expenditures which are coming."
Hindsight is always great.
Always 2020.
But nobody managing money or looking ahead really saw the recession of 2007 and '08 either. So, while you might want to say, "We could have done better looking ahead," realities of the time might have derailed even that great plan.
Very likely could have. And we've, we've not rebounded proportionally since that '07 and '08. The other, the other figure that's in here is this emergency medical dispatch. 90 days ago, we weren't even talking about it. And...
That's one I would like to talk about as well at some point.
And here, yeah.
Well, that is sort of a emerging need nationally, in Kentucky and locally. And it, I think, came about because our number-one employer in Danville, Boil County, that being Ephraim McDowell Regional Hospital, which is a great community asset, our number-one generator of taxes that provides services to all the citizens. said, "Look, we need to have medical dispatch services in order to qualify and be rated to continue to progress as a hospital. And plus, your chances of people surviving cardiac arrest are going to be incredibly increased if you do this." And so that got the discussion going, and it's progressed to this point. Now, there are, I still think, very few ways in which that can be done. And I know some of the commissioner or others have thought there might be additional ways that could be done. But I think really, the only, the most likely way it can be done is through the 911 center.
Now, you had mentioned that the county has agreed to fund some upfront money as far as EMD goes? Or was that 911?
Well, I mean, our esteemed newspaper reported of that meeting where they committed, and we've got a county magistrate here who said that they will support funding in the amount of $105,000 to implement medical dispatch services. And I think that was confirmed to me by an email, that they were going to be willing to do that, as well as committing to paying what their fair share of continuing 911 services might be determined to be. So I think that's a very responsive and responsible action they have taken to help address this need that has been voiced.
Would that still leave us at the $300,000, or would that affect that?
That would drop it down, I think maybe $100,000, right.
Okay.
As long as they maintain the balance of the funding for 911 necessary as a prerequisite to doing the enhanced. It all, you know, the devil's kind of in the details of reaching that, understanding what a fair share of the cost is.
Right, and I think-
But the total cost is about $250,000 to $300,000 of implementation. If we get $100,000 from somebody else, sure, I mean, right.
Somebody else go ahead, I'll ponder a few and come back.
Maybe we can just respond to questions, or I can continue through this, and there's questions to come to you. I'll be happy to stop.
Plow ahead.
Fine.
All right. On page three of this memo, I go into some length about the discussion of our road street paving, bridge replacement sidewalk repairs. The Cliff Notes to that segment are that our law was enacted in 1948, where it has most of the money going to counties that are collected from the state road tax monies. The city gets 7.7% of all monies collected and distributed in that fashion. So we're on the short end of the receiving of that fund. And further, the state and the federal governments too have suffered from declining amounts of money being generated by the gas tax for making road improvements. A number of years ago, the state put in a floor, so you'd still continue paying a few cents at the pump. But with gas prices going down, you know, more or less is being generated, we get a small portion of that annually. So we have an accumulation of need that is continuing to grow in terms of keeping our roads and streets safe and operable for all the folks that come here, live here, and drive to work here. We get $310,000 annually from that fund. We also have been, in the last year or two, been proactive in building new sidewalks where we haven't been, I think for many years prior to that time, instead relying upon the requirement of our ordinance to have abutting property owners repair their sidewalks, which never addressed the question of, "What if there are no sidewalks there?" So we've stepped up using general funds to do this, and the need is there, and the need will continue to be there if we want to have a walkable city, as has been suggested and demonstrated as a great asset to the city for many reasons, from economic development to the wellness, to the connectivity, to the sense of community, for safety issues. So that is one of the elements in the recommended occupational tax adjustment, in the small amount of $60,000 each year. That's what we've been doing, and we want to continue that because people like it. I mean, it's safe. I don't see people in wheelchairs out on the sidewalk. I'm out on the road anymore as much as I used to, and you've all seen people driving down the street in harm's way for themselves or others. So that's, that's one thing. You know, we've got $95,000 for blocky property. We've spent the last two years talking about the huge challenge of dealing with code enforcement blocky property. And while we don't want to, because we value historic preservation in our community for many, many reasons, tourism being one of those, and just sense of beauty and place and history and our role in that, and the others, occasionally, or eventually, if we don't prevent or correct, we have to take remedial action for the public safety. And so in the last year, we have found some monies to demolish a few buildings and gone to a competitive bid process, tried to do that. It's usually about $15,000 per building. I mean, when, under our former fire chief, we even had the fire department doing it at one time on a building down on Second Street, that many of you might recall that took forever to get to, in terms of just going through the legal processes. But, you know, we have to set some money aside for the public safe and safety and health of tearing down these dilapidated properties that are hazards, and health hazards. And some of that is also commercial property that could be made available and generate new sorts of economic activity in our community if we could remove the existing blight. So that's, that is a need. And I don't know any way around not appropriating some money to do that. Otherwise, we live with the blight and the health hazards going forward. We've talked about emergency medical dispatch services to some extent. I again commend the county for being willing to step up to the plate and doing that. I would offer the perspective that in this area, while the population, density of population is within the city, actually, the county residents probably will benefit from that as much or greater, given the distance it takes for an ambulance to arrive at the scene where somebody's calling in or having a problem. Our fire department goes to our own, in city limits, calls when there's an issue, and our paramedics often are there before the ambulance arrives. And they do provide that service in cases that warrant it, whether it be for drug issues, for accidents, you know, injury, gunshot, whatever it may be, until the ambulance arrives, if they get there ahead of time. But the, the emergency medical dispatch services, where they can coach another in terms of how to save a life until somebody arrives, is the coming thing, and it's worthwhile doing for all the reasons mentioned before. You know, the additional cost to us, some in terms of stations, but it's mostly for the additional four people that would be required to staff that. And these four additional staff people are needed, once again, for the public's knowledge, in order to have sufficient staff to have rotation of the 24 hours and have more than one person there, to be able to dedicate themselves to a lifesaving event, and when the call does come in, and not to jeopardize something else that may be happening at the same time, or the, or the first responders responding to that, but not providing adequate information. But in, in reality, all of our dispatch staff will have to be trained in the emergency medical dispatch, because it's not going to just be four new ones that are added. It's going to be, everyone will be trained and be cross-trained to do that. Now, that's going to have benefits to the citizens in addition to the medical dispatch. It's going to relieve what is a very busy work schedule of those folks. They receive $1,000, $1,200, or $1,200 calls, you know, a month. I mean, and so it's going to improve working conditions. I think we've had challenges in the past in retaining employees simply because of the sheer volume of work. And having another person to assist in that will help in retention. So it's a good thing. The cost, while it seems a bit steep, in the overall scheme of things, it's really probably not, if you're going to be in the business. Now, this may be a time to open the door to any further discussion about emergency medical dispatch services. I know there has been some, some thought earlier about maybe different ways of funding it, different ways of delivering it, are there alternatives?
I think you mentioned that this would improve the hospital in some way beyond providing obvious services. That being the case, maybe we should ask the hospital if they would be interested in weighing in with this financially.
That might be a reasonable question to ask them. I don't know of any other service that the city or county provides where we ask for a voluntary contribution from a private sector. But they may be very happy to do that, because it's, I think it's key to their continued success.
Right.
Their success is key to our continued success.
Well, and I'd be willing to bet that the trend going forward relative to what Commissioner Cottle was alluding to is that we're going to start having to see a lot more than that. It can't just be coming out of the general taxpayers. If somebody comes through, it's like water. We run a water line to a particular industry, they pay for it, in terms of, in terms of the additional service. We pay for the water line, I got that, but we get the revenues from it too. So I'm just simply saying that I think that's a fair exercise on our part, and it may be a trend going forward.
It could be. And I don't know if this has been implemented in other sectors of the country. It may have been. I'd be happy to have that conversation with their chief executive officer. In fact, I already have to a limited extent. And the answer wasn't entirely no at that time. The question was more, if that were to be pursued, what would be the amount requested? And I did not have an answer at that time. But they were not just absolutely negative on the idea. It's important to them, it's very, it's key to them.
What was the total cost of that again, Ron?
Well, we believe the total first-year cost would be approaching $300,000 to add the staff and do the training and the equipment. And of course, you would have ongoing then costs for salary adjustments in future years.
Sure. Yeah, being $300,000, and the physical court willing to kick in $100,000, and yet the county may benefit from it more than the city, I think it would be appropriate to go along with the mayor's suggestion and try to get the hospital involved. There should be a third partner in this, if not a fourth.
Well, I'd be happy, again, to have those conversations. And I don't want to be misunderstood in saying the county may benefit more. I mean, we've got the population density here, and we would benefit in sheer numbers. But when you have individuals that are a long time away from where an ambulance starts out, you know, benefit is relative to your need at the time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a concern for having somebody on the phone helping a caregiver is the length of time getting there. It's apparent from your documentation here that our fire department does a very good job in aiding EMS, and we're on the spot pretty quickly. So it's those folks that are remote, five or 10-minute drive out of the city limits.
Or 20 minutes.
Well, yeah, I was being conservative.
Excuse me. And doing some reading on EMDs in other communities, that's one of the advantages they said they had, and I don't know if our first responders can verify, that it keeps y'all from having to make some runs that... Would y'all go out anyway if we had the EMD service? Like, they were saying it saved them from having to send their guys.
That would be something, that would be something we'd have to look at and check the criteria, what we need to go out on and what.
Yeah, I was just curious. That was not something I had thought about.
I think that since there has been discussion about who receives certain funds from, I guess, the state level, is that where that comes from, the 911 funds?
There are local funds that are generated from the county's tax on telephones, landline telephones, that are earmarked and restricted for use in 911 operations. There are state funds that are generated from use on cell phones and prepaid cell phones that are distributed locally, restricted for use on the 911 center. And then there are our local funds, city and county, that go in to support the service.
Right, so some of those funds have gone through the county, but we're trying to get some of those funds to come directly to us?
Yes. And they were reserved by the county in their judgment, while they're earmarked and restricted for use for the 911 center. The judgment they made, as they were originally the point of contact on the Danville, Boyle County EMS, oh, not, sorry, not EMS, 911 center, the county made the determination that they would hold those funds in recognition that capital upgrades would have to be made. And I'm about to talk to that issue in the next topic.
Okay, well, where I'm going with this is, I believe, before we tried to implement this EMD, that we need to clarify the funds and where they're going and where they should go before we try to move on to implement EMD.
The process that, that I and our staff believe needs to be followed is that we recognize that our current equipment, and the county will readily recognize this, I'm sure, our current 911 equipment, virtually all of it, is 20 years old, nearing 20 years old, and it's practically obsolete. You cannot readily get repair parts, new parts. You have to either go to those that we might have on hand or try to find some. So the safety of all our citizens is dependent upon the reliability of that equipment and the reliability of those operating those equipments. So our plan is, quite simply, to continue to pursue the replacement of the obsolete equipment with the new, next-generation 911 equipment, beginning with the issuance of a request for proposal to get the best price possible in July, that will then get the quotes to meet the specs to provide the next-generation equipment. And that, in that process, the county will need to release to the city those funds held in reserve for that purpose of replacing that equipment. Now, that, we have to start the RFP process. We can't kind of solve the problem before we start the process. So we've got to know what type of equipment, what it's going to cost, and go down that organized path to get the funds, if we accept it, released to go towards paying for it, which again, is the only legitimate use of those equipments, or those funds at all. They're restricted by state law and regulation for use. So the county has already said that we are in favor of paying our fair share of the 911 operational costs. So I think we're headed across that bridge together at this point. We need to continue that direction.
Right, and we need to make sure that all of that is airtight before we can move into implementing EMD.
Yes.
Which leads me to, that may be a budget item for next year, because I'm not, I don't think we can do all that in a year.
It's going to take a while to actually implement the person trained and at the console and the system to do this.
Correct.
And we're contemplating that we will upgrade the equipment and install that roughly January of 2018, have some training on that equipment while the old system is still operational, and transfer operations to that new equipment, say, April of 2018. So we have a rather detailed and busy work agenda ahead of us to make that happen. We cannot continue to exist with obsolete equipment that we can't get parts for.
Absolutely.
Nobody would propose that we do that.
And so I guess my question would be, and you probably can't really answer this, but would we need to run implementing EMD parallel to the new equipment? Or would that need to come afterwards?
Well, I think it's going to be one and the same, depending upon our ability to get all the staff trained on that component of providing medical dispatch service. They have to be certified or recertified, if they've already been certified, in that element. And it's not a huge amount of additional training, but they've got to cycle through. It takes us almost a year to get into the law enforcement training academy now for our police officers. I think we might be able to get this separate course- I think we might be able to get this separate course a little sooner, but I mean, these things don't happen overnight. So as we plan to transition to the next generation of equipment, which will improve safety for responding officers, it will allow the next generation of communication with text and video, and we've seen those scenes on nightclubs where things happen, the only way they can communicate is by text or video without endangering themselves. And so we're trying to move towards that next capability as required by the FCC. So I think this is the logical and best path that not I developed, but actually our director of IT, Nick Warren, has spent a long time thinking about and trying to prepare to do. And there's much more in this soup in terms of discussion than I'm giving you the outline of.
Oops.
And with that, we'll wait until we get lights again, Coles.
You may have mentioned it, but did you mention MOA? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about with, between us and the county?
Yes, well, in my opinion, I don't think that the county disagrees with this. I think we need to come to an agreement, an interlocal cooperation agreement in terms of how the service is to be provided and the respective cost elements to making that service reliable and consistent. It's no different than the agreement in large part that we have now with the county where we contract with them for collection of taxes. We have that agreement. Why don't we have one for this?
Mm-hmm.
So yes, that's part of it.
Right, and that's what I was saying, is we need to make sure we have that in place and I think, I think, yeah, before we add anything, before we get ahead of ourselves.
Well, I, our city attorney is, is working and has been working on developing for review a interlocal agreement, and it's a little bit of an undertaking, but he has begun that process some time ago. So I'm hopeful that within the next 60 or 90 days, we will have a very workable agreement for review and hopeful agreement by those users of the systems.
Okay.
So, I mean, I see that sort of being checked off the list prior to actually getting the equipment or doing the training, and I think that's your point. We want assurance that we're actually going to be all aboard before we leave the station.
Right.
And then, of course, the, still in the same vein, and I appreciate you for bringing that up because they're tied together, Commissioner Terry, that, that continued discussion about the emergency medical dispatch as well with the hospital. I think I saw in an email from you two the possibility of sharing with neighboring counties. And so I think maybe in that discussion, Ephraim McDowell does have a presence in Stanford, that hospital is owned by Ephraim McDowell, and it would seem that that's something worth talking about when it comes to emergency medical dispatch.
Well, the, I will say that nationally, as well as in Kentucky, given the cost of providing these systems, there seemingly is increasingly a effort to provide, to incentivize the development of a more regional approach. Your call can go out over the air further cheaper than having one in every county or two counties. And a couple of legislative sessions ago, the state legislature did address 911 issues to a great extent by increasing the fees on cellular phones that were distributed back to local users. They imposed a new fee on pre-purchased cell phones, for example. They reconstructed the board that governs these operations, and they also provided some incentives for local 911 centers to consider merging operations in that they would get first in line for grants if they were a regional versus a single county, for example. There's a hierarchy coming down. So there's, so there's some effort at the state to also say, we need to be more regional in developing these services. Having said that, I don't know anywhere in the country where you have a urban population where the merger occurs, where you're dropping all of that and going to a rural area for provision of service. It just doesn't happen. There are some more rural 911 centers that exist, but our volume and our workload in the urban area is so great that I think those rural areas aren't accustomed to that. And the natural progression of things is for urban areas to expand those out. So yes, I think there is an opportunity existing for discussion, say, for example, between Danville and another area, whether it be Harrisburg Mercer County or another, but I don't see it as practical for us to consider or even really seriously contemplate that we would end our 911 center here and move operations somewhere else. It's too much activity here, there's too much knowledge and interaction here, and it would be inefficient for our law enforcement forces to travel to another remote county to deal with things that they can deal with directly here.
No, I agree with that. I'm just talking about the person, the emergency medical dispatcher being able to talk somebody through, even if it's a dispatch coming out of Mercer or Lincoln County, and that service shared cost-wise with that county.
Well, here's my understanding, Commissioner, of the term emergency medical dispatch. Dispatch is a certification bestowed only by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Training Council or Commission, right? That's where we send our, our police, we send our 911 operators, and so does the county or counties, so do other cities. You have to be a member of the law enforcement community in order to be admitted for that training provided by other law enforcement officials. Hospitals, I don't believe, can be certified for emergency medical dispatch. If they could, I'm sure our own hospital would have pursued that. So it has to be, in my knowledge at this present time and my belief, a service of a law enforcement body.
I may have confused you. What I meant was that we would run our 911 center, share, the cost could be shared by a neighboring county.
Oh, yeah, if they wanted to tip in on the cost, sure.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion you could have with our local hospital, since our local hospital has clinics in all of our neighboring counties and actually owns the hospital in Fort Logan and is in some sort of negotiation with the one in Harrisburg. So I think it's, it's a good discussion.
That, that, well, maybe, it could be an efficiency spread as you're talking about of their.
And of course, we're bringing this all up because this is a new expense that we're faced with and versus the tax increase that you're proposing, and I think if we can find ways to share costs, it's good for everybody.
Sure, it'd be a win-win.
Yep.
Sure. On page five, I have given some overview to attempt to clarify the requirements of the State Heritage Council on those cities that have achieved certified local government status. And Danville has achieved that status now since, I think, the early 1990s, maybe it's 1992 or '04. And we recently are upgrading our design overlay guidelines. There was a presentation earlier this week by the consultant under the grant provided by the Heritage Council to the city of Danville. At Danville, as we are a CLG, they're helping upgrade those guidelines. But when we all think of Danville, we think of our place in history, we're a place of bold ideas and city of firsts, and we, our identity is wrapped up in our historical significance as is that of our landscape, our institutional buildings, our combination of private and public buildings downtown, and we have a beautiful location, which is why we have over $82 million of tourism expenditures in Ball County annually. Eighty-nine, thank you. So, you know, we're approaching that 90 million or more amount. The requirement of CLG, and in your document are slides from the earlier discussion where they came down and talked about the benefits to the community and to private businesses and to individuals in government for being CLG are listed here. The simple requirement of the city as the lead partner in that agreement is that we will have both qualified staff on our AHB board to make decisions as well as qualified staff as the CLG determines because they're administering federal funds to pass them down or oversee the program. And to maintain that CLG status, we have to either hire or contract with qualified staff that's acceptable to the state in order to continue our status. The $80,000 that's recommended in the budget is an outside figure that would allow us to either contract with an appropriate firm to provide the services or to try to hire someone on staff that would aid our AHB and their work, aid in preservation education, aid individual businesses in being successful and getting grants and to develop, you know, tax credit programs for redevelopment of their second stories or development of their businesses, and generally to promote preservation efforts in Danville generally. You know, if we don't have, frankly, if we don't have the CLG status, we will lose that special connection with the state, our efforts at historic preservation will be diminished. And so that is the recommendation that we fulfill the obligation that we used to have met, be met by the former director of the HART, Bethany Rogers. But in the letter that I think I forwarded all the city commission a week or two back from the State Heritage Council, they said even though we had met that requirement through the HART of Danville's staffing in the past, again, the obligations on the city to meet it, and meeting it through the HART was not the most desirable way of doing it because the HART's focus is only on downtown and our preservation's efforts should be much wider than that. Those go to historic nominations, those go to the problems that we have talked about here in this body for the last couple of years in terms of buildings being torn down or others outside of the downtown area. So this is the recognition of the need to fund the position, and that's the recommendation to you in this budget.
You touched on my question, I think, to a degree. Just the job description of this person is somebody who searches for and applies for grants and, but also does some programming as well?
Well, there's, it can be widely, a long list of things. They can certainly do grant writing. One of the functions would be to, in all the decisions that the AHB has to deal with in terms of, does it meet the technical aspects of the overlay? What's envisioned by at least Vicky Brianberg at the state is that you will have someone basically do writing of narratives that will follow the Secretary of Interior Standards and apply those and make it easier for the board to reach the proper decision, if you will, almost like a little legal brief on every issue ahead of time. Do that to help property owners to find grants to help preserve their property or to receive tax credits in doing so, to promote historic preservation within the community generally, and probably some other things that I'm not even mentioning. So it's kind of a switchblade, Swiss switchblade of services, but being performed by someone with the training and skill in the eyes of the state to do so. If that answers your question.
It does, it does.
Can someone, can someone receive that training as we talked about some of our 911 dispatchers also receiving training to be emergency medical dispatchers?
This would be a more comprehensive training, and it contemplates or requires a college degree versus a specialized certificate training.
Sure, yeah.
In either architecture or in our related field that's deemed appropriate and relevant by the state.
That would feel like some of my fellow commissioners are sitting back thinking, why is this burden on us? And when the HART of Danville has hired two people, they should have had that in their mind, I would have thought.
Well, that may be a fair question, but in reality, the agreement with the state says it's the city's responsibility. We could try to have someone else perform it, but ultimately it's our responsibility. Now, in trying to achieve the desired outcome, I did have conversations with the HART regarding this matter, and they either didn't accept what I was attempting to tell them or they had a different understanding.
Well, then, maybe, maybe, maybe the funding, if the, if the commission chooses to go down this road, maybe that needs to be largely funded with the dollars we would have, we would have committed to EDP, which those dollars go to the HART of Danville.
That could be a future point of decision, I think, among some of you individually, and I'm not sure collectively I've expressed this opinion. But my opinion and recommendation is that we have gone through a great review of our organizational efforts with RKG. We have a recommendation in front of us to spin off those satellite agencies, if you will, and focus on economic development, and that we should try to implement that and in so doing, not make immediate changes to the status quo with regard to funding, but rather in the next cycle, approach some of those questions after we've achieved some decision on potential implementation of the basic organizational structure.
So I asked Ron to find out how we had benefited from being a CLG. Were you all copied on that email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the numbers go back to 2010 with two of those years, there was no application for grants submitted. And so the total over seven years of grants that we have received because of being a certified local government is right around, it's just under $28,000. And that's basically over seven years, but really only five, because two years, no applications were submitted. So my next question is, who was applying for those grants? Was that the HART of Danville director at the time?
My understanding is that the HART director usually would be the person or the point person applying for grants in the past. Now, see, we, we, as you know, we've gone back and forth with the HART in terms of who does what, in terms of the enforcement of the overlay requirements, for example, and I've talked about in 2011 where it was requested the city resume performing that duty because the HART found it a conflict to try to promote downtown activities and festivals and also regulate those businesses in compliance with our overlay guidelines or historic preservation. I mean, they saw it as a conflict to be a regulator as well as a promoter. And the current HART has made it clear in their presentation to us back in January, February, that their mission, as they see it, is to promote downtown enterprise activities and leave the regulation aspects to us. So while there are, in total, you know, 27, $30,000 in grants you could point to over the past 10 years, say, and that may not be all of them, I think the slide that Vicky Brianberg provided just noted that small grants can be obtained to assist with preservation efforts. To me, the grants are sort of the icing on the cake to help achieve the greater mission of trying to promote and sustain preservation efforts. And if we don't have a plan of action, dedicated staff, assistance to our committee, and all the things that staffing would bring, we're less effective at that than is desired. Grants help. I mean, the grant that we're getting to update our overlay was one of those small grants that we got.
So can you, I can't, I can't seem to get my hands on the email, the other email that you and I had exchanged regarding this. The proposed changes that RKG has recommended as far as the role of HART of Danville in relation to EDP, and there was some mention in there about HART of Danville's fundraising?
Yes.
And I didn't quite understand that.
I'll attempt to succinctly summarize that. My understanding is that in the past, the HART of Danville used to do fundraising efforts annually or all the time to largely generate funds for their operation. And a relatively small amount, say $5,000, came from the city. At some point in time, and it may have been 2010 or '11, somewhere along in there, when the effort was made to develop the EDP into all encompassing umbrella organization for coordination of economic development efforts, agreements were reached, were in, city and county, for example, agreed to certain terms and conditions under that three-year agreement, and agreements were also reached with those, I'll call them satellite agencies or, or community agencies, such as the heart of Danville. I haven't seen this document, but I have been informed, and I believe it's accurate, that in their agreement, the heart with the EDP, they were guaranteed, basically, sustainability of what they had generated previously on an annual basis going forward, and those amounts would come out of the total amount collected by the EDP from all sources, including the city of Danville. In, in specific terms, that means, for example, of the $145,000 annually that the city of Danville contributes for economic development activities, the heart, either from that pot or all pots of revenue combined by the EDP, receives annually and on an ongoing basis what they had been generating earlier, which is the amount of $110,000 annually.
Okay.
Is that clear?
But the heart of Danville still fundraises. That's where you kind of lost me.
Well, they, they may. Maybe you can fundraise and not be, have your entire operation dependent upon the success of your fundraising. They have, they have, they have a grandfathered amount, which is the base of starting operations before they fundraise. But I, I think they are precluded from fundraising certain large organizations that basically in lieu of contributing to the heart, fund the EDP operations. And I'm talking about the $25,000 donor level of banks or others that made those two or three large entities that contribute now to the EDP as opposed to the heart, which they did previously.
So at one time, the heart was almost completely dependent upon their fundraising?
Much more so because the city's level of contribution, as I understood it, was closer to the neighborhood of, say, $5,000 rather than what it currently is after going through EDP.
And so if this strategic plan from RKG is implemented, the heart may have to go back to more, being more dependent on fundraising?
They will have to be dependent upon some revenue sources other than what flows to the reformatted EDP, because those will be, as recommended, if that's incorporated, will be limited for economic development activities rather than community development activities. So I think the answer to your question is yes, they're going to have to be more directly in the game of fundraising, much closer to what they were doing a number of years ago. Now, how that mix of revenue comes to them and who individually or organizationally contributes is yet to be determined.
So getting back to where we began, if, or began, if we went through with hiring this certified local government employee, would that be a city employee then?
It would be.
Yeah, because we're supposed to be doing that. Okay. So now you're pitting funds against the funds we're giving to the heart of Danville because they had done that for us previously.
They had done some of the work previously.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And they'd done other work that we weren't doing as a city too, necessarily, in terms of directly promoting events, activities. We do some promotions, of course.
I think the upside is if we went that direction and it was the right person, there's been a need in this city, and some people have filled it, but it's been with extra time to have a permanent grant writer, because there's a lot of money out there that can be had. But I don't think everybody has, has the capacity to do it full-time. Certainly, this, this individual would not have that capacity for full-time because they're doing other things, but that would be probably part of their job description.
I, I think it could be within probably the parameters of their expertise. I mean, any grant writer is going to be more successful in specialization rather than just general grant writing, although there are some of those out there too. But I mean, just, Commissioner, think of our success recently in getting the almost $1 million grant for the expansion of the water lines to the industrial foundation and improving the water lines down Paragon Span, and all that. I mean, it was a grant writer on part of the engineering staff, of our engineer overseeing the wastewater, I mean, the city water, you know? So grant writers tend to specialize, particularly for their large brands, in things they know and have had dealings with people and so forth. We're contemplating, for example, the fact that we may have a need to make future improvements to our sewer treatment plant facilities, and we are contemplating early on, as I can do, contracting with an individual that may have skill in that particular set of circumstances to see if we can achieve similar outcomes. You know, a million dollars here, a million dollars there, it's worth trying to get. But that doesn't mean that any grant writer has those requisite skills in all areas. And don't hold me to this, but I think I may have told you at one time, I myself was certified as a grant writer through the American Grant Writing Institute of California.
Well, there's your retirement job.
So, I mean, you know, just because you are a grant writer doesn't mean that you actually write grants, or that you are specialized or well-versed in all areas.
Can I take a hard right here for just a second? Because I'm going to have to excuse myself, I've got an eight o'clock plane I got to catch. But the, the comment that I'd like to make before I leave is that you hear quite frequently that we all just spend the money broke. And I think it's worth noting that this city, as a matter of self-imposed practice, maintains a reserve budget of 20%. And if, 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 as you proposed, that would, that would mean we would have next fiscal year, a little over $3 million in reserve, which sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot when you consider that this is an expensive operation, the city runs on a $50 million plus a year budget, and pumps are expensive, fire trucks are expensive, natural disasters are expensive. And so the 3 million is, it's nice to have, but it's, it's, it's nothing to get comfortable about. But nevertheless, I think it's important to note that, that this, this organization, City of Danville, does exercise proper fiscal responsibility in maintaining a 20% budget.
I will agree with all that you have said with the added footnote that for each of the past five years, we've had an audit that has been comprehensive and has no major findings of any fraud or wasted money. We have completed each fiscal year with a small surplus position, as predicted at the beginning of the fiscal year, but not an overly large one, and our, our operational surplus in most recent years has been less than a million dollars at the end of the year, which is on average, less than our monthly pay the bill list. So we squeak by, but we don't have vast pockets of hidden reserves that we can tap.
So, have a nice time, Mayor. Can't wait to hear about it. So go back to the grant writing and CLG. If we were to contract this and not hire an actual employee, this $80,000 is a maximum expense?
Yes.
Could be.
And it is with the employee. I mean, the employee won't make 80,000, yet it would be in the fourth year, 50,000, whatever we can work with fringe benefits, which is usually, usually 20% plus training, plus operational, you know? So all of that's an outside number, and whichever way we could most efficiently proceed would be the way we would want to proceed.
And if you contract, typically, the payment for the writer is included in the grant, sometimes?
Well, yeah, I mean, sometimes it's, it's a commission, sometimes it's a fee basis for grant writing. But this would have to be, if we're providing ongoing staff service to the AHB and others in our community, it would be a service fee, kind of like hiring a lawyer, and it would be the writing of the check at whatever amount for that regular access required.
Like a retainer upfront, and then it'd be based on, no?
Not if it, if, if we were potentially doing a grant, yes, but if we were hiring someone qualified to provide ongoing services, there would be just the expense of their contract to provide that service. Now, if it's a two-part contract where you're going to provide the service and X dollars guaranteed, or an hourly rate, and in addition, if there's some option of trying to get a grant, maybe on that arrangement, they could be on a prospective basis for the grant portion.
So it's like hiring a consultant, more or less, just?
It's, it's like any service provider, whether it's, you've got a regular service you're going to ask them to perform, and it's a regular expense going out to a architectural firm or someone who has a profit.
There's a good.
Element built into whatever they're going to charge.
There's a good worksheet in your packet that tells everything that the staff is supposed to do.
Well, I didn't know there was a coloring sheet in here.
This is important role of staff.
That's for the CLG certification.
Yes, but that would be one of the roles of that person.
And I know one of the other recommendations from the Heritage Council was to expand our historical district to include the entire county. Would that be possible if we had this person?
It's hard to say. Having more resources would arguably result in greater opportunities and better outcomes, whatever that might be. It could be that we'd have a greater appreciation, understanding, and support of the private sector in terms of preservation activities. You know, I, I can't say all the positive outcomes, but necessarily expanding it, I don't know if that would occur either because you, those are decisions yet to be made.
So, but would that, would this person be limited to the city limits, properties within the city limits?
Well, our obligation is citywide. Our, you know, we, we don't typically provide free services to counties, and we are prohibited by law from spending money on county projects unless we have an inter-local agreement and joint funding to do that. So I guess I'm saying it would be a greater resource with greater outcomes to fulfill our role citywide. And I think that's.
It would definitely be just not Main Street anymore. Downtown, it would be citywide.
Citywide, because right now, our historical district that is.
In the overlay.
Governed, so to speak, I can't think of a better word, by the, our architectural heritage board is essentially downtown. Whereas we could, at the very least, expand it to the entire city limits. And then maybe, in the future, if the county were so inclined to contribute, we could expand that to countywide, because there are a lot of our properties that are in danger that are in the county, so.
It, it would give us a greater resource to, to better address all these questions. I don't know that it necessarily would have any guaranteed outcome or predicted outcome. The decision to expand the current overlay, for example, as I understand it, rests with the city commission. Some people don't want to be in historic district and object to being so. So I don't know that it would necessarily guarantee that, but I think the goal would be to have greater awareness and appreciation for the historical aspects of the town and certain segments. I mean, for example, I live in a rural historic district. It's one that I voluntarily sought. That's not commonly known, it's not governed by the AHB overlay, but that rural historic district, which begins at Bull County Line and proceeds through Cape Cod Farm on the west side, is a sort of an effort to protect that whole tract for visitors coming into Danville on 127th South from Aronsburg. And as people understand the value of history, and its relevance to our community and to economic development and to their life here, I think it does open up greater opportunities.
So if we contracted someone and/or hired an employee, and they did not perform to the level that we want or asked, would we just, would that just be like a one-year contract?
Well, again, it would depend upon the terms of the contract, or if they're an employee, they would be, like all employees or all contractors, subject to supervision by the city manager and performance review of the terms of either the contract or performance as an employee.
I suppose, I guess, sometimes when you have sales reps out of your office, they're, they're expected to produce a certain amount, usually in regard to their salary, like they are expected to produce twice their salary in revenue. So I guess that's what I'm asking is, would there be a certain level of expectation there?
Well, I think we haven't come to a common understanding or maybe agreement as to the central role of this person. On the one hand, I hear people suggesting, and respectfully yourself, Commissioner, about maybe a, a principal role would be grant writing, and it might be, but I think the state views it as fulfilling our essential obligations we already have under our agreement, and those don't include grant writing. So like anything, you have to cover the basics first before you can expand to new opportunities. And that's not to say we couldn't do some of that, or even in the basic obligations is to facilitate a greater understanding of our community and its residents with regard to financial incentives under the federal and state tax credit programs that would perhaps give them the incentive to transform their buildings, such as 311 West Main Street, to be an income-producing property rather than not, and things of that nature.
Need to do this, can I take a timeout? Since Mike left, if I leave the room, we'll have less than a quorum, so I'm going to call it first timeout.
Ten-minute recess.
Okay, Commissioners, if I can then proceed, have we completed our current discussion on the AHB staff position?
I think so.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Well, on page five of the memo, I talked in summary terms about other new cost items, and we've talked already this evening about the recommendation on the continuation budget for the Economic Development Partnership. And that recommendation in the preliminary budget tonight is just a little bit different than what it was before. I mean, I recommended before, and I recommend tonight, that we continue with the funding of the EDP in the next fiscal year as it currently exists, as we contemplate the implementation of the RKG recommendations. However, rather than the city attempting to step up individually and fund that second position as recommended under the study at the rate of 95,000 or 90, I forget which it was, $90,000, I am recommending that we simply set aside a grant matching program and the amount of $40,000 to be used to implement any of the recommendations of the EDP study if, on a matching basis, either public or private dollars come to do so. And so that will help encourage some implementation of some of those recommendations and all that's yet to come, but it's at least an expression of interest that we believe we should step up the game to the extent we could financially do so if others helped to do that.
I just wanted to say, I think the city has more than proven that we are committed to EDP, and we can't fund it alone. So I, I know that I was one of the Commissioners that, I, I actually said we could give them one-third of the money and ask the county and industrial foundation to give the other third so that everybody was equal. And so my only question about this is, will there be specific benchmarks? And so my only question about this is, will there be specific benchmarks that they will need to meet in order to receive this funding? Or there are specific uses for the entire forty thousand dollars?
You know, Andy, that's a good, very good question. In the earlier discussion of the preliminary budget, I recommended that we continue what we're presently doing. We basically provided another forty thousand dollars over what we done the earlier year, and that money be restricted and targeted for marketing activities. I don't repeat that tonight, but I do think our continuation budget should still have those priority uses as the requirement for use of the funds. This forty thousand, I have not attempted to micromanage in terms of how that's spent. I mean, there are a range of actions, and I think the newly reorganized board will have to make some determination of what they feel as the most eminently achievable of those and convince others that it's worth doing. And so I'm sort of just leaving that as a future decision, but trying to provide the financial match to make that happen.
Yeah, thank you for your comment there, Ron. You know, some people think that this commission up here dictates what happens over at the EDP, and it's really that board, and we're helping fund that activity. So in that, I'm behind Commissioner Terry on us only funding one-third of what they're wanting to expand their staff, because there should be some other partners in this. So I'm with her.
I don't disagree with that either. I think that if we're partners, we're partners. I think you said that, and that's well said. It's just, let's do it together. But I do think, I've heard some criticism about the idea in general and about other things we should try. And I'm sure there are as many ideas as there are people as to what we could do or should do to fix our economic woes. But I think the fact that we all got in board, on board with RKG, and this is what they recommended, that this is what we should do for now. You know, I could see putting a, you know, we need to see some results in X amount of time, certainly. But I think that to just disregard everything that we've heard the last however long he's been here would be a mistake. I'm willing to go down the road and see where it goes for now.
Yeah, and again, you know, this is one of those areas that's kind of pitted against proposed tax increase. And, you know, we got Michelle to do her magic stuff with her numbers at one of our City Commission meetings. And so two thousand forty jobs would kind of equal the tax increase. I think that puts a little pressure on the EDP Board to step up their game a little bit, too. I think that, you know, one of the things with RKG, and again, this is up to the EDP, but I don't know that we have our focus on the right ball. We're winning on tourism, we're winning in our healthcare, and we're winning some other areas, and we're putting a lot of energy in the industry, and so is the world. And so hopefully the EDP Board will take a focus differently.
I think that was one of the recommendations. And of course, one of the primary goals of this study was to identify the areas that we would be successful in this community and to develop a game plan for being successful in those different areas that might differ than just industrial development. And so those are being identified, and those are future opportunities for success.
Going back to the taxes, that was my question, Commissioner Sears. I couldn't remember the number of jobs that it would require for us to make up this amount.
Neither could I, but I wrote it down.
So we would need over two thousand jobs, new jobs, to offset this tax increase? Right, not replacement, or, I mean, those are new jobs. So, you know, we really don't have much of a choice.
And I think we're making some strides there, you know. Certainly Jennifer's here, and I'm not here just to pat her on the back, but Holiday Inn Express and some of these other things are creating some of those jobs. And of course, the argument would be, are they the right paying jobs? But, you know, you start with jobs first. And if we start focusing on healthcare and education, Center College, I don't think anybody over there is making minimum wage. I mean, you've got to focus on the things that win for you.
And we also need to remember that sixty-six percent of our workforce lives outside of this county. So we're not catching them on the property taxes, or right now even the restaurant taxes and things like that. So this is the only way we're going to catch some of those taxes of people that don't live here. I mean, sixty-six percent, that's a big number.
It's actually the only way we catch them, because we don't get them on the insurance premium to XT, because that's based on where you live, so.
Can you say that again in the microphone?
We, it's the only thing that we catch the outside people in is because the insurance premium tax, which is our next big income license fee, it's based on where you live, so.
So the insurance tax is also based on where you live?
Yes.
And then, you know, with the car license tax, that's also based on where you live? So everything else is based on where you live?
Absolutely.
Except for this?
It's based on where you work.
It's based on where you work.
I think it was in the maybe nineteen seventies that a challenge was made to the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government for their occupational tax or occupational license fee. And it was upheld that it could be applied even if you weren't a resident, because the rationale was that you use roads and streets that require upkeep. And so clearly, they use roads and streets to commute to a workplace, as well as other amenities, arguably. So on page six, if I may continue briefly, I again repeat the Streetscape funding, four hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred fifty is local match for our Main Street grant phases, both phases, from Fifth to Second Street. And I mentioned earlier that we, more likely than not, will have additional street projects in the future as we've had in the past. So that's in part of the need. And the half million dollars, the five hundred thousand dollars in new needs is in recognition of the annual debt payments required to replace the Main Street Fire Station and new fire truck at the estimated cost of one and a half million for the new fire truck, and the probable cost at least seven million for renovation of the building and any perimeter land acquisition that might be required. Now, that's a bit of a premature figure, but we think a realistic one, given cost of building facilities. And we know the fire truck is at least a million and a half. And so those are important facilities to upgrade so that the city can remain protected by our first responders, have the appropriate facilities, response vehicles. And it's essential for the city to maintain our insurance fire rating class of four, which is essential to reducing insurance premium, insurance policy costs, basically, insurance premium cost for people that buy insurance for their homes and businesses and so forth.
It's a lot of truck.
That is a lot of truck. It's kind of hard to contemplate a truck of that magnitude. But, you know, our last rescue truck that we purchased two years ago, that was not a hook and ladder truck, and it was a shorty by comparison. And I think that one cost over six hundred thousand dollars, half the length. So I guess it's proportional.
The chief's not here. I was going to ask him if he went to North Broadway Auto Sales to see if they had maybe a used one he could pick up. That brings me to my next question, and probably just because I can't find it in the budget. But back when we bought that truck, we saved for a couple of years and we paid cash, as I recall. And then for the park up here, we saved for a couple of years and paid cash. What are we saving for currently? And do we?
We've got about one point four million dollars in the budget as of right now that we're not going to borrow. That's for the fire stations, one and two.
Okay.
To get it started and to get, you know, preliminary stuff. So that's what we have saved for there. So however you figure that it's going to, we have about one point four million that we've saved, that we're sending on the fire station, our money. And then we're having the budget to borrow about seven point five million dollars, and that's six for the fire station and one point five for the fire truck. It's six, one half dozen other, how you weigh that.
Right, right, yeah.
But yeah, but it's about that that we save for.
Thank you.
In order to do that.
So again, on page six, I recommend, I make the recommendation that we've talked about previously and tonight as well. And that is to increase our occupational license fee and net profits fee by one and a half of one percent to generate the funds sufficient for the next year and to carry us forward for quite a number of years thereafter. Next year, if there is a timing requirement of the state in terms of changing any business-related taxes or fees, if we do this rather immediately, we can only have the effective date apply at the earliest of October one, two thousand seventeen. The county collects our taxes and remits it thirty days following the end of a calendar quarter. So the earliest we would receive any additional monies would be January thirty-first or thereafter.
February fifteenth.
So really, yeah, middle of February.
Receive our money.
So next, in the review tonight was to be a discussion of our funding recommendations of community agencies. Those are essentially, from my opinion or my point of view, unchanged from that that you have received earlier. We've had a lot of discussion individually on some of those. I noted in tonight's comment, commentary that Bull County Schools did not continue to provide funding for the Community Education Service. And we had potentially recommended four thousand dollars to support that community education position. So you might agree that we no longer advance that funding because that in singular amount won't be adequate to do anything. So that's one area of reduction. And if there are others, I guess it would be the expression of the body in terms of making those changes. Did I say that we had reduced generally appropriations to individual community agencies by seven percent over the amount funded last year? There are a few exceptions to that. One of the largest being the new funding of BCTC to match the state grant of about three-quarters of a million dollars. And that new appropriation is rather large for the city as it's fifty thousand dollars to promote workforce training at our college.
Yeah, I consider that an economic development investment.
Which it is.
Aside from the, from the other agencies to me.
On your budget in your package, I think those current amounts listed on page twelve, I believe. Yep, page twelve. And maybe you'll just want to flip to that and see if there are any suggested or requested changes.
I think we should start off, if y'all are in agreement, to go ahead and take out the community education.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I think with some of the other, I don't know how the other two Commissioners that are left in this small body feel, but I still have some issues with some of the community agencies that look like they overlap each other. But I would prefer, rather than to hash it out here unless the two of you think differently, to just send my recommendations to you via email, again.
I have received.
And see if anybody else agrees with me.
Well, I've received expressions, and I appreciate really all the communications I've received from every one of you, as well as others. Ultimately, it is my responsibility to try to make a recommendation to you, and you can accept or reject those. If you still have specific recommendations you wish to make on any of these, I would ask that you do it as soon as possible because Monday is the day that I will be giving you back a document in this meeting. And after that point, it's increasingly challenging to come to different conclusions, although that can still be done. But, so either tonight, or if in the interest of time, you want to think about it a little more and just shoot me off something tomorrow, you know, do that, please, tomorrow.
Commissioners, you want to discuss any of it, or?
I'm good with doing that. I just was curious as to if these agents, if this agency amount was reduced from last year, how is the total more?
Because of the fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars?
That's a new, I mean, reduction would be prior to the inception of the fifty thousand addition.
So that fifty thousand was added and essentially fifteen was taken off of the total? So that's why there's thirty-five?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually more, thirty-five thousand actually more?
Right, the BTCC.
But that's, that's the big one. And we talked earlier about some of the other larger ones in there. For example, the Brass Band Festival, which is coming here very soon. In the current year, it was thirty-two thousand, and that was slightly reduced to thirty. But they have a three-point-four million dollar economic impact to our community. And in the interest of economic development, it seems counterproductive to scale that back. And others generally were scaled back to some degree. I don't know that any other one was increased. And senior citizens was held at the same amount as last year, sixty-five thousand. That's important to our seniors and to our communities.
And then we'll take off the four thousand dollars for community education?
We can delete that one, certainly. And other ones are sort of judgment calls. And we operate as a City Commission based upon collective judgment calls. So if you have thoughts, you know, please share those.
You want to submit that by email?
Yes, you recognize that if one says A and the other one says B, we'll end up at eight point five or something.
I was going to ask you how you like this format? Did you like it better when we did the numbers and, or?
Well, I, I think it's, it's actually more consistent with the form of government and the responsibility of the City Manager to make a recommendation. Now, you can differ from those, you know, but I think really, it's more difficult for each of you individually to just to try to do that absent the larger numbers and pictures. And granted collectively, this is only two hundred thousand or more out of the total budget. But it's, it's a lengthy process, and we spend a lot of time doing it. I don't know that we've ended up greatly different than where we were before. I think we've sharpened the pencil there some and asked some questions. And there's, there's benefits to both approaches, and so, I don't know. But I just would say it's consistent with the responsibility of the manager, whether I'm here or not, someone else is for it to be performed and recommended for your review. And so, does that mean you next year should want or expect not to have individual agencies' presentations to you? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, you still might want to know what's going on out there, but you might not want to be the point of making an initial recommendation. You still might want it just as a matter of information and accountability to funding that's going on here from them. So I, I don't know if that's a clear answer or not. I'm not sure if I have a clear answer.
I just wonder, you know, you're dealing with tens of millions of dollars, and then we have you fretting over six hundred bucks on the community agency. I didn't know if that was more of a burden, more of a strain on you than need be or not, so.
I think it's part of the, part of the job, but you may, in your role, you know, want to alter whatever, I think, which is certainly your role.
Seems to work okay?
I may retract a little bit and just ask my fellow Commissioners on a couple of items here that I still feel like there seems to be a little overlap. If you take a look at New Hope Food Pantry, and now Grace has jumped in the game. How do you two feel about that? I mean, you know, BCTC is added, and we feel that's great economic development. Grace is also new, and there's a great benefit there. But there is great benefits in a lot of programs out there, I'm just.
Sure, I, you know, I agree there's some overlap. Between Grace and New Hope, I think the, in my- Between Grace and New Hope, I think the, in my mind, the difference is there may be somebody who doesn't have anywhere to prepare the food that you typically would get at New Hope, you know, if you're homeless or otherwise, didn't have access to a kitchen, so they're, they're a little bit different, but your point's well taken that at some point, we need to make a cutoff of, we're not taking anybody else.
That was kind of my point, was we're trying to reduce this, and if we're trying to reduce, then we don't need to take on new.
Yeah, that's my concern. We're looking at this tax increase, we're taking on some new things, we certainly wanna cut back, but Grace isn't a cutback, and I'm not trying to pick on them.
Right.
They're new. And so it kinda concerns me a little bit, and it also concerns me, as we talked about before, in some of these things, whether it be Helping Hands, Grace, or pick any other one you want, if you're not opening the door to other people to come knocking with their handout as well. So it's something that weighs heavy in my mind, and I would appreciate your opinions if you wanna give them tonight, but that's up to you all.
I think my brain is tired.
Well, are opinions on those particular ones, or just?
Yeah, yeah, it seems Grace and Helping Hands, they sort of, I think you made a good point though, Commissioner Caudell, that one is prepared, where the other one, they'd certainly pick up and have to prepare themselves.
But again, I think that you, you made the good point about, at some point, that we gotta discourage people from coming here to look for their money. I think the, the thing about Helping Hands, I think it's a great organization, but I noticed they had over forty thousand dollars in the bank.
I think it's more than that.
Is it?
So the, the point is, if you have money in the bank, why are you coming and asking us for more?
Mm-hmm. And they spent fourteen thousand last year.
Yeah, the other thing you sometimes sit back and think about too, is that it's nice of us to help our citizens along in any way we can, and, but some of these organizations, seems like the church community ought to be jumping in the game a little bit too, and maybe they are, and I just don't know about it, but.
In the food business, I learned that many of the churches are involved in terms of preparing food and actually delivering them on the weekends, and that's quite a number of churches in our communities.
And I think almost every church at least has some type of food bank, or are distributing some type of food, whether it's prepared or not. The, as far as Grace Cafe is concerned, the, for me, the difference is people that are going there and paying have a choice to go there or to go to a for-profit business, and the other, these other agencies do not have the general public walking in off the street to contribute to them. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep, makes perfect sense. Yeah, that's a tough one.
I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, in that, that direction, let me see if I can conclude this overview of the Page six and seven sort of again summarize the fact that the budget proposed for the next year only has the recommendation for the addition of five staff, four for the emergency medical dispatch service if we provide it, and one either contracted or directly employed through CLG. I will say to you, that was a difficult, difficult conclusion to come to because at City Hall, we still wear multiple hats and perform multitasking to a large degree and are a hard-working lot, I'll just say that. So there are needs here, but they're not being addressed in this recommended budget. However, in recognition of the hard work that they do provide to our city and its citizens, I am recommending, as I think the county did, that we give a cost of living increase at the level recommended by the state, and that's two, two percent, and also authorize a merit performance above that, up to one percent. In my earlier presentation, I had those numbers reversed, but that's the correct lineup for that recommendation. We're continuing to provide our family medical coverage, and I would have to say that we negotiated a cost decrease of one percent of that total cost for the next fiscal year, which is a pretty amazing outcome, and was the result of a lot of hard work on our part, particularly our Human Resources Director, Donna Peak, as well as myself, and-
Did you make somebody cry, Donna?
Well, we tried. We tried, so, you know, no other benefit changes are proposed for employees. We're trying to tighten the belt in terms of not purchasing capital equipment, but rather going to the fleet management program, which we spent a lot of time on, a month or two back, and gonna save roughly fifty thousand dollars every year in terms of doing that leasing rather than purchasing of most of our vehicles. So we're, we're trying to be good stewards of our tax funds, and I think we demonstrate We talked about the number of initiatives underway that the city has spent, in some cases, a lot of time over the last couple of years in terms of implementation of our energy savings, efficiency savings project. We've got a number of other studies, our Master Park Facility Study underway, twenty years since we've done that. Implementation of a wayfinding sign program for our city in downtown. There were some run or two previously, and trying to get that accomplished by other sectors of the community, and that didn't progress, and so the city took that on, and that's actively beginning in the near future. And of course, our Fire Main Street Station analysis, and we're moving to the design phase on that. It's pretty exciting to think that we're going to complete that twenty-four million dollar upgrade to our water treatment plant, and that's going to be done this next fiscal year, probably in July. We, if Earl is still here or has left, he's left, but we're also going to be doing the Educational Water Splash Park there at the Lexington Avenue area, and we think, speaking of grants, Commissioner Terry, we think we've got a good potential of getting some grant money to help with that as well. So that's all positive. We're going to be incepting the work in the fall with our efforts to help our industries expand, stay here, and attract new ones with the water flow capacities we're gonna be doing with the benefit of that EDA grant in tune of nine hundred and eighty thousand, as I recall, total project for the next year is about one point nine million dollars that we're advancing to improve our water flow, both for industry and for individuals down in Perrville, and the construction of a water tank down there to follow. So we're, we're doing some exciting things to move forward in our utility service area. The big thing also is in terms of our energy efficiency improvements to our water lines. We've got a almost seven million dollar project that we'll be beginning next fiscal year for that. That's gonna be a great service enhancement to our users of water, residential, business, industrial. We'll be able to meter that remotely, and in case of problems, give a pre-alert rather than waiting till the water has already left the barn and having to pay for it afterwards. And so I think that's gonna be a great step up in terms of service and moving the system to a new level of professional service delivery. So on page eight, I summarized, but just telling you, the total resources in the next year's recommended budget of being fifty-seven point nine million, total appropriations fifty-three, and total reserves of a little over four million, four point one. Those are listed in detail in the budget. Again, I wanted to mention that if our budget plays out, and we're, we've been pretty good in terms of following the budget and coming in pretty close to what's predicted, you know, our fund balance for the next fiscal year at the year's end is anticipated to be only three million seventeen thousand three hundred fifty-eight. And after you compare that with the required maintenance of our fund balance target or reserve of two million seven hundred fifty-eight thousand one sixty-three, that leaves the great sum of two hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars remaining as a, if you will, a operational margin of error. And if you do the math on that, that is zero point, a lot of zeros, followed by a small number. And so it's, it's a close budget, even though we're talking about an influx part of the year with added revenue. We're doing an incredible amount of new initiatives in the next year, some of which are long overdue, some of which are light-year improvements in terms of operations, some of which are essential for industry and actual service, and the remediation of inadequate services in some areas to some of the areas that we serve. So it's an exciting time for completion of a, you know, of a big project, historical, the largest capital improvement project we ever made in Danville is water treatment plant improvements. That's coming to an end, and we're also got some new equally exciting ones beginning going forward. So I'm excited about this budget, and I recommend it to you for your acceptance.
Remind me again, Michelle, what the, if you do it for a whole year, how much the tax increase is per?
It's one point six million, one point- One point six to one point seven million dollars on payroll license fees and three hundred thousand on net profits.
Three hundred thousand?
That's what we were estimating for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And so going forward, it would be just a little bit more than that.
In, in us making this decision, we're certainly gonna vote on a tax increase, and I think we did this two years ago. It'd be helpful, not only for us, but probably mainly for the public, just to see what that impact is on a typical paycheck, because I think what we decided last time, it was hardly noticeable. So I, I think if you could bring that to the next meeting, that would be helpful.
That's a great suggestion.
If you make thirty-five thousand dollars a year, then your total tax, not just the increase, your total tax that you pay to City of Danville is seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred for the whole year?
Whole year.
That's both of those? Or that's just, that's from an employee's pay?
That's from an employee's pay, but that's not just the increase, that's all that you pay the city.
That's the entire.
Yeah, so if you just do the increase, thirty-five thousand times. Be a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
There's a hundred and seventy-five dollar increase. Okay, thank you.
Total for the year?
For the whole year. Divided by fifty-two weeks, three dollars and thirty-six cents a week.
Yeah, I think that for any of us, a hundred and seventy-five, that's a pretty good chunk, but spread out over the year, it's not so bad. So I did this last time with my business office manager, you know, just what has that taken out? And I think it was something similar to going out to eat one day, maybe bagged lunch, kinda covers it. Yeah.
Well, and-
Pardon me?
Well, and we're all business owners. Four of the five of us own businesses, either have or have had payrolls in employees, and because we are business owners, we have to pay that net profit tax. It's not like we're implementing something that doesn't apply to us, is my point.
Sometimes I feel like a nonprofit, but I'm trying to make money.
That's very good. I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think the last, one of the last taxes on vehicles, and I run quite a few of them, so it was hurting me as much as anybody.
And on that same point, all city employees pay that tax as well.
Absolutely.
All right. I think you did a good job. I think you ended, before we started commenting, and a positive note, Danville in Boyle County is progressing well, and we've got some exciting things happening, and that comes home to me as I go out in the community and I meet new residents, visitors. They're very complimentary of what's going on here. And so it's, I guess it's up to us to keep the ball rolling with our partners over at Boyle County Physical Court. And in, in one area, our partners in the industrial park as well, they need to be helping out a little bit here. You know, none of us wanna feel like we're carrying a heavier load, so hopefully that'll come, come forward. I'm looking forward to some of these studies to come back to us too, from Parks and Rec and wayfinding. I think that's gonna be very important for us, so. I'm tired too, Commissioner Terry.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.